That beautiful prelude music was by Gina Wingfield. Gina, please stand up. That was so beautiful. Oh, Susan Miyamoto, we take you for granted, okay? We kind of think you sleep in that corner, okay? And just, thank you. I'd like to call this meeting the Temecula City Council II Order. It's always good to start our meeting with an invocation as Pastor Ricardo Velarde of Reliance Church here. Pastor, come on down. You're the next contestant. Then we're going to follow with a flag salute by Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, so please remain standing.
Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that might affect our city. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the great glory of your name, and for the service of our community. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, please join me in saluting our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Schwank?
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigara?
I am here. We have an interesting meeting tonight. We've got to move some things around by necessity. It'll become evident here in a moment. We have some votes to count, so at this time, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Services District and President Stewart.
Now, I would like to call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam Secretary, please know we're all here with the exception of Director Ron. We will now proceed with item number 12 on the agenda, the public hearing for Temecula Community Service District rate and charges. This is the time and place for the public hearing regarding the levy of rates and charges for service levels B, C, D, and R for fiscal year 2019, 2020. The rates and charges for service levels B, D, R, and zones 2, 3, 5, 8, 9, 12, 13, 16, 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 28 for service level C are not proposed to increase over the rates levied last year. The only exceptions are automatic increases for zones 6 and 29 for service level C on account of increase in the CIP, and an automatic increase for service level D on account of an increase in the CIP and tipping fees. The rates and charges for zones 1, 4, 7, 10, 11, 14, 15, 17, 22, and 27 of service level C are proposed to increase over the rates levied last year. The proposed increased rates and charges are referred to as assessments. Property owners in these zones may submit assessment ballots to indicate their support or opposition of the proposed assessments. The public hearing is hereby officially open. We will first have a presentation by staff followed by public testimony. After the conclusion of the public hearing, the ballots will be tabulated by zone and the results will be announced. May we please have a staff report?
Good evening. I'll start it out, and then Pat Thomas will finish it up here. The Temecula Community Services District, which operates under the authority of the Community Services District law, provides a variety of services to city residents, including residential street lighting, perimeter landscaping, slope maintenance, recycling, refuse collection, and unpaved road maintenance within the city of Temecula. These services are collectively referred to as the TCSD service levels. Property owners only pay for the TCSD services used or made available to their property through separate charges on their property tax bills. Each of the service levels have separate rates and charges that are calculated by the city's consulting firm, Web Municipal Finance, and are detailed in the engineer's annual levy report. At tonight's public hearing, staff is requesting that the board adopt the rates and charges established for each service level for fiscal year 2019, 20. Rates for service level B, residential street lighting, and service level R, unpaved road maintenance, are proposed to remain unchanged from the current rates of $25.68 for street lighting and on $115.26 for unpaid road maintenance per single-family residence per year. There are a total of 29 zones within service level C, the perimeter landscaping and slope maintenance. Two of those zones have annual inflators that were previously approved through property owner elections, and the fiscal year 1920 rates reflect a 2.7% CPI increase as noted in the table. 10 zones are in the process of property owner elections, as will be further explained by the Director of Public Works later in this presentation. Rates within the remaining 17 zones will remain unchanged from the prior year. Rates for service level D, residential recycling and refuse services, are calculated annually per the franchise agreement with CRNR. For fiscal year 1920, the rate is proposed to increase $16.90 to a rate of $298.42 per household per year. The rate increases a result of CPI and landfill tipping fee increases per the franchise agreement. Additionally, an extraordinary cost adjustment of $6.48 is included in the rate as requested by CRNR to offset the loss in revenue from their inability to sell recyclable materials. I'll now turn the presentation over to Pat Thomas, who will discuss the service level C ballot proceedings.
Thank you, Jennifer. As President Stewart mentioned earlier, we have 10 of our service level C zones which we're proposing to increase the assessment for, and I'd like to explain the reason and the procedure that will be used for that proposed increase. The reason is basically that the ever-increasing expenses for the maintenance of the slopes has continued to rise. So without any increases in the revenue, which has not occurred in any of these zones, we have just not been able to keep up with these increasing expenses. So what is proposed this year is that 10 of the zones would, the rate would be increased in these 10 zones to an amount that would be needed to keep up with the expenses. The process for increasing the rates in the zones is based on California state law Proposition 218, and that requires a vote of the residents or property owners within these zones. That procedure was initiated early this year. We held numerous public meetings to explain the need for the increase and the process that would be used for this vote. In the early part of 2019, a ballot, a mail ballot, was then sent to all of the property owners within these 10 zones for them to vote on whether or not they would support this proposed increase. This is referred to as a protest hearing, so if there are a majority of the votes that are returned that are protest or not in support of this increase, then the increase will not go forward. If the majority of votes that come back are in support of the increase, then the increase would be approved and would go forward. Residents are allowed to return their ballots. These ballots were actually sent out in May. They could be returned to the city clerk at any time. We've received a number of these ballots back, and they can be returned as late as at your public hearing here this evening. So just again, in summary, we have a total of 29 zones, landscape, slope maintenance zones throughout the city, and this map shows the location of all those zones. We selected 10 of these zones that are in the worst shape from a financial situation of being able to keep up with the expenses to propose this increase this year. And this map here in front of you now shows those 10 zones. They're mostly in the northeastern quadrant of the city. I believe we have approximately 1,100 parcels included within these 10 zones, and ballots were sent to all of the property owners within the 10 zones. The next slide will show you what the current rate is for these 10 zones. That's in the yellow, what the current annual rate is, and what the proposed maximum rate would be if this proposed increase is approved. What we've proposed is that this increase would be phased in over a three-year period of time, so the last three columns show what the rate would be for each of the next three years, at which time it would be at its maximum increase based on what our estimate is for the cost of providing the services. And then going forward also, as part of this ballot, there would be an annual inflation index or consumer price index increase that would be added on to the rate going forward. The proposed increase in the, with the index going forward would be the consumer price index for this area up to 3%. So if the consumer price index is lower than 3%, that would be the annual increase going forward. If it's higher than 3%, that increase would be capped at 3%. So what will happen from here is, at the end of your public hearing, we'll be counting the ballots to determine the outcome of the vote of these 10 zones. And again, if it's approved, that will go into effect, and it'll be phased in over the next three years, and following that, there'll be an index increase in the rate. If there is a protest or if a majority of the votes are opposed to this increase, the current rate would stay in effect, and we would basically be maintaining the current level of service, which has actually been declining over the last several years because of the fact that the revenue has not increased and the expenses, including the cost of the maintenance, the cost of the water, everything that it takes to provide this service, has continued to increase. So we would basically just be maintaining that current rate and providing basically the essential minimum level of service. What we were proposed is that in the future, we have 19 additional zones that are basically in a similar situation to these 10 zones that will be voted on here this evening, and we were proposed that we would take an additional group of zones that we would look at proposing an increase that would be held at your hearing at this time next year. So that concludes the staff report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mary Ann?
So, Pat, if I understand this correctly, these, this hearing is necessitated by the fact that these communities have either by development agreement from the beginning of time or because they've requested the city to take over maintenance of their slopes and things like that because the city can do it probably cheaper than what they could contract. So these are not fees that the city has forced upon anyone or imposed upon anyone?
Right. No, these zones were formed at the time that these different areas or tracks were developed, many of them up to 30 years ago, basically at the time the city incorporated. Either a district that was in place before the city incorporated that was inherited by the city, or a district that was actually formed and approved as a development project with the city.
So homeowners purchasing homes were aware of this from the beginning?
Yes.
And this is how they maintain the, you know, beautification of their, the areas around their community?
Correct. Right, and because of the fact that when these zones were established and the rate was set, there was no provision for any increases going forward. We do have the two zones that have voted on an annual inflationary increase that's in place now, and these 10, if this were approved, that would also add that inflationary index going forward after the three-year phasing period.
And one more question. Does the city derive any profit from any of these services?
No, absolutely not. All of the revenue that is generated goes into the expenses associated with providing the maintenance for the zones, and it is all accounted for separately too. So all of the revenue for each individual zone is accounted for and budgeted for specifically that zone, so it is all exclusive to the zone that the revenue comes from.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing? All right. So we'll move on with the public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak on the proposed rates and charges, including the proposed increases to the rates and charges for service level C, should present a speaker card to the district secretary. If you haven't done so, please do so now. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers?
We do. We have one speaker, and that speaker is Gloria Whittington.
Good evening. I'd like to share with you the property map that we were provided. Can you see? Is it upside down or right-side up? I can't see it from here on the screen. We're currently living in Zone 7, which is called Ridgeview, which is technically, we live in the Meadowview side of it. And we are in Track 21764 on this corner lot. In conversations with city at some of the public meetings, we were told that this area here is about 35,000 square feet that the city would be maintaining. However, this is private property that belongs to each of these parcel owners here, and the city is currently maintaining part of a flood control canal that runs behind our property lines within our properties. That 35,000 square feet, you can see this large section here on the corner, is my, is a third of our property. However, the easement that is allowed by flood control is a five-foot canal, in a sense, through our backyard to allow for flood control, which originates not here, but it originates in another part of the city. I had proposed and suggested that we take a look at where that source of water is coming because there's a huge amount of sediment and erosion over the last 25 years that's occurred that has not been maintained. We can't build on that. It's unbuildable land. It's technically unusable. I have city flood control, I'm not sure what the, it's like a berm that goes into the flood control canal into Meadowview as well. So I had asked to have someone look into, which I don't believe has happened, but where the source of this water is, why are we as property owners being assessed this amount when the source is the golf course and other residential properties that have since been built into those areas? So they're not being assessed, but it's their water that's coming through flood control and through this section. The other areas in blue that you can see here are along Lost Arena, which are part of the Ridgeview property or Ridgeview HOA, if you will. But there's some concern here about why we're being assessed for 35,000 square feet of land that is not all maintained or irrigated, or, you know, the city does do weed abatement along the stream, but that's like a five-to-10-foot wide area only. I'd love for the city to put landscaping in my yard, but that's not going to work. The concern is that our current rate is $89. $89, it's moving up to over twice that, almost $200. Yes, I understand it hasn't been assessed before. We get that. Costs have gone up. We understand that as well. But in fairness to this section here, this needs to have some review by the city to assess the actual source of that water. It's caused erosion. It's caused sediment. I've had the city out to look at it. They agreed that there is a sediment buildup that actually changes the flow of that stream, and during the winter, that stream can get quite full. So we're a little concerned about that. We would appreciate some review on that, if this is voted or not, but it still needs to be reviewed for an assessment. We don't know if the city is willing to pay for the sediment buildup here, but it's something that has been caused over the last few years, last 20-some-odd years. Again, the source of the water needs to have a look. The 35,000-square-foot number was actually given to me by the city, by Pat's team, so I have no reason to doubt the accuracy of that, but we'd appreciate it if the city would consider taking a look, another look at this. Here's one image of the property line here. This is our property, and this shows the actual flood control, see if you can see, the flood control canal that runs behind all of the properties. And it's quite a large area. Again, it's not usable land. We can't build on it. I, you know, it's hard to access, especially in the winter when you have water flowing, and it goes straight from here. This is the rock area. This is our lot, but it's flood control rocks that go underneath the tunnel under the street on Delray into Meadowview. Meadowview HOA has worked with flood control and the city, I think the city, I'm pretty sure, and other agencies to do erosion abatement on the Meadowview parcel of land, which is owned by the HOA, which we belong to. However, for some reason, they have not taken a look at the source upstream, only downstream.
Okay? Thank you.
So I appreciate some consideration.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Nope, that was our only speaker.
Okay, so... If we have no other speakers willing to speak on this, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, the district secretary and her designees will open the tabulating, open and tabulate the returning ballot.
Mr. President?
What?
If we can go ahead and go back up to Section 4 and go ahead and give them an opportunity to submit withdrawal.
Oh. If any, if you are a property owner of Zone 1, 4, 7, 10, 11, 14, 15, 17, 22, or 27 of service level C, this is your final opportunity to submit, withdraw, or change your ballot. Please approach the district secretary if you wish to submit or withdraw or change your ballot. Seeing none, now I can close it? Or, okay. The public hearing is now closed.
Will you be taking comment? I'm just curious.
Will I be taking comment?
Yes, after the count, there is a section before the adoption for council discussion and questions.
Thank you. Ms. Whittington, I'll address your affair. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, so they're going to start tabulating the ballots that were returned. The ballots will be tabulated across the walkway in the conference center, and interested persons may observe the tabulation. During the tabulation, the board will move on with the other agenda items. Upon completion of the tabulation, the secretary will present the tabulation results to this board for further action. I will now recess the TCSD meeting, back to the city council meeting, and turn it over to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We will now reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Now's the time for presentations and proclamations. We have three presentations tonight. I'd like to start out with American Patriot Music Project. Is Tony Villegas here? Hey, Tony, come on down. Welcome tonight. Who did you bring with you?
The boss.
The boss.
For now.
Bruce Springsteen?
Yeah.
I was going to say your wife.
I keep telling him that. All right, good evening. My name is Darren Eishem, president and founder of American Patriot Music Project, retired Navy SEAL. To the right, Tony Villegas, our executive director, Army veteran. And to my right, Delroy Kelly, Marine veteran, who's a prior beneficiary of one of our programs and also serves as a mentor veteran with us now. To my rear here, additional members of our organization. You probably recognize Ray Lundemann, whose father was recognized with the city recently. Outstanding drummer. Honored to have him with us. For those who are not familiar with American Patriot Music Project, we are a nonprofit organization comprised of an award-winning signature band, American Patriot. We facilitate music projects for veterans and first responders. We help them with challenges in life to provide a positive impact with their lives. This year, the city of Temecula awarded our organization a grant in the amount of $5,000 to help conduct an annual signature program event, a STEM guitar building workshop. We were able, with funds from the city, to execute this recently, last month, at Dofu Winery for a group of five veterans. The experience provided these heroes with four days of spending time with fellow veterans, sharing stories, creating new bonds, and also resulting in several days of healing, which is what we do through the medium of music. As a token of our sincere appreciation and gratitude, and on behalf of American Patriot Music Project, I would like to present this veteran-built custom guitar that was made during this last guitar building workshop with many hands, many veterans involved with it, to humbly say thank you for the support of our organization and the veteran community. Thank you.
Wow, that's amazing.
I think we need to come down there and receive that gift. Do you want to join in here?
All of us?
Yeah, I might add that there's going to be additional veterans that are going to be mentored by those that completed this last project, so it's an ongoing process. And thank you so much.
Well, really, I think it's us that need to, first of all, thank you for your service to the United States of America. That's first and foremost. And on behalf of the city of Temecula and on behalf of the city council, we received this gift. Anything you'd like to say?
No, I was very pleased to actually be the one to award you guys that $5,000 grant because it was, I was searching for a veterans organization, and then I remember you guys playing at the State of the City, and then, and then I heard about what you guys do for the veterans and how they make their own guitars. It's like, that is so cool. So I was very excited to actually be able to award you guys that, so, thank you.
Come on in. Let's get a picture, and we're going to find a good place in City Hall to display it. We've got plenty of room to do so, and this is quite the honor. Awesome. Thanks for being here tonight. This is great.
A pleasure. It's on the back.
Yes.
It's signed by all of our veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you send us a link to that?
Yeah.
If you can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we'll post it with this one.
Okay.
Who knows? It's up to Mr. Adams where we put it. And Randy, if you like, you can take this to your office and jam. Okay. Oh, here you go. All right, our next presentation is going to be on Temecula Safe Driving Campaign. We have Christine Damco and Ms. Betsy Lowry. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're going to take a few minutes and give a brief overview of Temecula's newest campaign, and it's our Drive Safe Awareness Campaign.
Excuse me. Recently, the city of Temecula, our community and our region, there were three fatalities in a row that occurred days or weeks apart recently, including multiple injuries due to a drugged or drunk driver. This has brought DUIs and actually other poor driving choices to the forefront. These particular DUI accidents did not happen in our city technically, not on a city street, but nevertheless, our city grieves with these families for their loss and suffering. At this, at the request of Mayor Nigara and Councilmember Zach Schwank, we are raising awareness on safe driving choices and supporting other campaigns, including the DUI Terminator Team. That is a local grassroots team that has started as a result of these accidents. Our Riverside County Sheriff with their Street Racing Campaign, SCAGS Go Human Campaign, and our CHP for Safe Choices and Driving Smart.
So this is a three-month campaign, and we're splitting up the three months, and we're concentrating on specific areas. So we're kicking off July with the overall theme, and you'll see this Post-it note throughout the marketing, and it's almost like a mom's or a loved one's Post-it note before you go out the door. It's, okay, it's PS, drive safe, you know, I love you. So that's kind of the theory behind the yellow Post-it note there. So July, we're kicking off with your general distracted driving, and then August will be focusing on drunk or drug-impaired driving, and then in September, we'll focus on your red light runners, your speeders, and bicyclists and pedestrian safety.
So for July specifically, our focus is distracted driver, and it's no coincidence that our sticky note says "Love Temecula" because it is in support of our mayor's theme this year, "Love Temecula." And you will see these Post-it sticky notes. We've ordered about 1,500 of them, and we're planning to distribute them around town to place on cars, as if there is sticky note, as well as business windows, just to remind everyone to drive safe, make choices that are smart. We are using conventional media, newspapers, actually, local radio, of course, our local social media. Check out Today's Post, which includes a very, you know, a real-life experience of a mom and a daughter. One text changed their life. We suggest that you take a look at that video. Our auto mall billboard is on point, "Don't text and drive." Also, check out the crashed car at Promenade Mall, Temecula Promenade. That is as a result of our CHP, and we plan to have another one here. And that said, our CHP and traffic officers are not going to be writing such little love notes as we have. They will have zero tolerance, and they plan on writing some citations instead. There's no second choices there. There's no second choices there. It's only chances.
So August is focused on drug or drunk impaired driving. We'll be moving the crashed car to in front of City Hall in the town square, and we'll also have appropriate signage telling the backstory, so when visitors and people are walking Old Town, they can check that out and read the information. We're going to give a presentation to our Traffic Safety Commission. We're using, again, conventional media, social media, our marketing channels, as well as the auto mall billboard signage. The Temecula Police will be hosting DUI checkpoints in Old Town and in Wine Country during this month, and we're also supporting our local grassroots, the DUI Terminator Campaign, on their efforts as well. And we're also going to be promoting the fact that, especially the younger generation, our Temecula Police Department was talking about how they typically think that marijuana driving and with marijuana in your system is okay, and is, in fact, you can get a DUI from that as well. So we'll be promoting that.
And finally, in September, schools in session, for the most part, for all of our local schools. So we will be educating the public with pedestrian and streetwalk safety. In fact, hosting a, what we call a crosswalk train. We'll invite participants, maybe the mayor, and we'll have the media out there, and we'll create an educational video, because many don't know that you can't turn right, you have to wait until they're off of the crosswalk even on the other side. So we'll display that in a fun way. Our police department will be implementing its SLAP program, Stop Light Abuse Problem. We have a red light runner concern, and so with that, we have, Public Works currently is implementing some traffic timing. They're evaluating the city by September. That should be in place where, when you're stopped, and there's going to be a delay of a one second to hopefully alleviate some of the crashes that we have seen. Also, Public Works is implementing some traffic calming measures. We have doubled what we call V-COM signs, and those will be, they're the blinking speedlight traffic signs. So we're going from eight to 16 citywide. Hopefully, that will help people with their speeding. Some other traffic calming will be presented to the city council, actually, August 27th, including the Red Hawk Loop, Vail Ranch Loop by Public Works, so we can get started on that September.
And this concludes our presentation. We hope everyone drives safe tonight, and we love you.
Great presentation, you guys, and councilmember Swank, great idea. Appreciate you taking the lead on that as well. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to come to our third presentation, and this is a biggie. A recently, a watershed event, a Temecula game changer happened yesterday. Can you put up the first slide? The city has been working extremely proactively on trying to solve the problem out on Interstate 15, and we started the Move I-15 Task Force, which involves council members from all the local cities. It includes Caltrans, Riverside County Transportation Commission, Highway Patrol. Who am I missing? Mr. Butler, Mr. Adams? I'm sure there's a few more.
Department of Defense, the tribes.
Okay. And we're, yes.
Congressional.
And, and we've been working diligently to solve this problem, even though primarily it's not a Temecula problem. What we mean by that is we've done the data, and most of the traffic that's on the 15 freeway there results, not necessarily from a capacity problem, but a movie, moving problem, a lane-changing problem, particularly south of the Y. And most of the traffic is not coming from Temecula or going to Temecula. Most of it is commuting traffic through Temecula going to points north. So we've been working diligently, and we have a few good things to report. First is the game changer. About two years ago, we applied for a federal grant. That grant was being offered by the Department of Transportation, and it was for approximately, Mr. Adams, again, $50 million at the time?
Actually, the first round application was north of $100 million.
So we asked for $100 million, and we were summarily rejected, okay? But we learned a great deal from that, and we came back and we resubmitted. Something unprecedented happened. Over that two-year period, we put together a package that was comprehensive. Comprehensive doesn't even do it justice. We put together videos, we went out and garnered support from Department of Defense, from Department of Transportation. And we're going to get into everybody here in a second. I'm paraphrasing for now, but we're going to get into some detail. And low and behold, we were awarded the $50 million grant yesterday. That, that, it's a Temecula game changer. What also was in jeopardy, if you recall, the recent gas tax, SB 1, that everybody was pretty much against. We had about $80 million on the line regarding that, and we thought that was going to help pay for Phase 2 of the French Valley Parkway. When we had that guaranteed, we went out to bid, and we found out that because of the delay, the cost of that went up significantly. We could no longer afford it with that $80 million. So we stood to lose the money because we couldn't use the money. But now that we have the $50 million grant, we've, we're able to secure the state money as well. So first off, I, there's, there's a bit I want to present, but first, I want to go to a video from my council colleague, Matt Ron, who's in Washington, DC. And before you play that video, he recorded it earlier today, and councilmember Ron sits on the committee along with me, that not only worked on the Move I-15 Task Force, but also worked on this federal grant as well. In fact, he played a most instrumental part, along with city manager Aaron Adams, going back to Washington, DC, and lobbying and lobbying hard, as one spoke in the wheel, in order to get the money. So can you roll Matt Ron's video?
Good evening. This is councilmember Ron coming to you from Washington, DC. I'm here this week working on issues related to wildfires and firefighter health and safety, but also here to continue our efforts to lobby for federal funds for transportation for the I-15 corridor. And let me tell you, I am pleased to be part of the announcement that says we have accomplished that goal. Temecula has received a $50 million grant from Secretary Chow in the Department of Transportation. I was going to film this in front of the White House originally, but decided that the Department of Treasury was a little bit more appropriate. Excited to see that these funds are coming to the city, and as, they're going to fundamentally change, you know, our transportation, our commute, and the traffic outside our doors. I look forward to celebrating with you all. Wanted to thank city staff, in particular, Aaron Adams, for joining me here on our last trip to Washington, DC, Betsy Lowry for always being there and being just such a staunch advocate for, for this. And of course, Greg Butler and Pat with Public Works. Your team put together an outstanding application, an amazing, absolutely amazing argument for why Temecula should be considered for this. You know, this award means that, like us, everybody else agrees now that the traffic problems on I-15 are truly a national issue with huge implications, and solving that has a significant benefit to our entire nation. So on behalf of a grateful council member, and I know my colleagues as well, thank you, Congressman Calvert, for all of your advocacy and hard work on this, Secretary Chow for all of your support on this as well, and look forward to celebrating with you all soon. Have a good meeting this evening.
And we appreciate councilmember Ron recording that. He wished he could have been there. He was actually ready to go lobby the Department of Transportation again while he was back there, but we got word that we got the grant at the time. I do got to say, Congressman Ken Calvert did some of the heaviest lifting that a congressman could have done, and it's really, really important to recognize Congressman Hunter. In particular, is that the current administration has absolutely no upside in granting this amount of money to, to the state of California. But as councilmember Ron had indicated, it was a national issue primarily because of troop movement from Camp Pendleton down the 15 freeway to points north. And we got support, actually, from the general at Camp Pendleton. Did we also get support from the Department of Defense, or did he represent the Department of Defense?
Yeah, he was under the Department of Defense umbrella, as well as Border Patrol Agency weighed in as well.
So we also had amazing support from Assemblymember Marie Waldron, Assemblymember Melissa Melendrez, the Pachanga Tribe, and a host of others, which, again, Mr. Adams, we're going to get into in a second. I think it's important for everybody to know what the money's going to be used for. It's going to be used for the French Valley Parkway Phase 2. So I'm going to ask first, Mr. Pat Thomas, describe what that project is, and then maybe move on to what the Move I-15 Task Force is accomplished with Caltrans regarding the additional lanes we're going to do in addition to this project.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I'd be more than happy to explain what this project will accomplish. We call the project the French Valley Parkway Phase 2, but it's really considerably more than just a French Valley Parkway project. It's really to improve the I-15 corridor through Temecula, which serves really all of southwest Riverside County and really a large part of, of Southern California, for that matter. So this project, the Phase 2 project, is to add two lanes to the I-15 freeway between Winchester Road and the 215 split. So it's about two miles between Winchester and the 215, and this Phase 2 project will construct two lanes adjacent to the freeway, northbound. There'll be a barrier actually separating these two lanes from the existing lanes on the 15 freeway, so that will eliminate that weaving movement, that traffic entering the freeway at Winchester and the traffic moving over to the 215 on the 15. That movement, that weave there will be eliminated by keeping those Winchester on, onbound lanes in their, their separated area. So those two lanes will go from Winchester up to the 215. One of those lanes will connect directly on to the 215, so that'll be your access to the 215 north. And then the other lane will actually be a flyover bridge that will go over that 215 transition, over and land back down on the 15 northbound. So those, those access points will be separated and eliminate that weaving movement, and that's really one of the major sources for the congestion on the northbound side of the freeway, is that bottleneck there at the split with the 15 and the 215, and the traffic coming on the freeway from Winchester, and those movements crossing back and forth. So by eliminating that weave movement, we expect that this project will be a major relief in that congestion on the northbound side of the 15. You can see on the slide in front of you, the, this Phase 2 project is the, the blue lines on the map in front of you, so that'll add those two lanes going north. And the source of funds, as you can see, the city's actually pledged about $18 million towards this project in city or local funds. It's a total cost of $137 million for this overall project. $47.6 million is coming from the state, the STIP program. That's money that was actually programmed through RCTC for regionally significant infrastructure transportation improvements. And that money, a good source of that money is also coming from the new gas tax that was approved by the voters here also. The TUMF program, being programmed both through WRCOG and RCTC, is contributing over $20 million towards this program. There was a previous federal grant, a safety loop grant of a little over a million, and then, of course, as you mentioned, this new infra grant for $50 million, which is, which is the largest share of the funds. And as, as you mentioned again, without the, those funds, we wouldn't, just simply wouldn't have been able to move forward with this project. So it's a huge win for the city and the, and the region to get this grant. Just to mention your, your comments too about the Move I-15 Task Force. Through that process, Caltrans, our, our local District 8, Caltrans, agreed to construct auxiliary lanes on the 15 to connect the on-ramps and off-ramps of all of the interchanges through Temecula. So that'll add one additional shoulder lane that'll go from each one of the on-ramps to each one of the off-ramps. That is a project that will be led by Caltrans. They'll be, including that project in their, what they call their SHOP program, so the, the state highway program for constructing improvements on the freeway system. They'll be adding that to their 2020 SHOP program. However, that'll take about somewhere between four and five years to actually go through the process of adding that and then, and then adding those lanes. The city actually agreed to take the lead in one of those auxiliary lanes, and that'll be adding that lane from Temecula Parkway going north to Rancho California Road. So we're just in the process of moving forward with, retaining a consultant to design that auxiliary lane, and then we intend to move forward with the construction of that. There's, there's some city funds that are being pledged for that. We expect that there'll be some Caltrans funds that are pledged for that, and then there's been some discussion with some other of our regional partners to pledge funds for, for that individual auxiliary lane as well. The total package of these Caltrans auxiliary lanes is estimated to cost approximately $50 million. So an additional $50 million of investment into the 15 corridor in our area here, and the one auxiliary lane that the city would be taking the lead, our estimate is that will cost approximately $8 million to deliver that project. And that's all, again, the credit of the Move I-15 Task Force, to see that these improvements are brought here to our region.
Pat, I, I know this is a long presentation, but I think it's important. The timeline for this, if we didn't get this money, was certainly out 30 years or more or never. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, so the, the, the I-15 French Valley Phase 2 project with that price tag of about $137 million, we, we did not have all those funds to be able to move forward with that project. We were short that $50 million that we had applied for that grant for. So if we were not able to secure that grant, there's a good chance that the other funds that had been previously programmed for this project would be deprogrammed, because the other funding sources require that you have the full amount of funds to move forward with the project. So we were right on the edge of really losing this project altogether, and that falling to a lower priority in terms of our overall regional transportation improvements for the region. And so, as you mentioned, if we weren't able to secure this grant, there's a good chance that the other funding sources would have been eliminated, and, you know, for a project of this size, it's just not something that, that a city of our size is able to, to, to really put together those amount of dollars to be able to, to deliver a project like this.
And along the way, I want you to reiterate that when we went out and got the state improvement funds, the STIP funds and the Measure A funds, at that time, we had calmed accurately that it was approximately an $80 million project.
Right.
When we went out to bid, the cost had gone up. And so the same dynamics in place if, if we didn't get this funding, that by the time, if funds were available, it would be over 20 years from now, and the chances of it being affordable are slim to none?
Yeah, so the city's been, you know, we call it chasing this project for about 15 years, actually, and we get a little bit of money, and then we see prices go up, and then we get a little bit more money, and prices go up again. And so we just continued to chase this project and try to keep up with those increases in, in inflation, basically, and escalating construction costs as the years go on. And so, as you mentioned, if we weren't able to move forward with this project now, another five to 10 years from now, we would expect that these costs potentially could have, you know, doubled again, and then the cost, the total cost to deliver the project would have been that much more, and really beyond our reach.
So we went from either slim to none or 30 years into what's our timeline now?
So we're hoping to be able to complete the design. We're under design on this Phase 2 project. We're, we're hoping to be able to complete the design by the middle part of next year, and then we would have to go through a process to be able to advertise for bids and solicit a contractor to begin construction. So we're hoping that that can happen by either the, the latter part of next year or early 2021.
And so with the auxiliary lane project and the French Valley Parkway Phase 2 project, the timeline for construction from start to finish for both of those is approximately what?
So the, and the two projects- So the, and the two projects are actually really kind of on a very similar timeline right now as far as starting construction, both in late 2020 or early 2021. The auxiliary lane, the project that the city is working on, is estimated to be about a year's worth of construction. So that would happen during calendar year 2021. The Phase Two French Valley project is about a two-to-three-year construction project. So assuming that would start in 2021, we would be completing that in 2023.
So approximately four years of constant construction on the I-15 when we start this?
Correct.
Okay, so there'll be a little pain, but it's either a little pain or nothing. Pain forever.
Correct. And then again, we hope that that's going to address a lot of that congestion you see out there on the freeway today.
Very good. Pat, thank you for that comprehensive report. I'm going to ask Aaron Adams, our city manager, to take it from here. There's a lot of people to thank, and we need to do that because nothing gets done by any one organization or any one person. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday was absolutely an amazing day to get the word that we were successful on a $50 million grant. While the city of Temecula was the applicant, was the lead, I think it's important that we recognize this was a win for Southern California, and that's really, truly how we are viewing it. Here on the screen, there's so many people to thank, and we could hardly fit them all on this slide, but the city reached out to everybody that you see here on this screen, and they had some role. They all sent in letters or they made calls on the infra grant. Congressman Calvert mentioned already, his help was huge, Congressman Hunter too. Assemblymember Waldron, she made calls, she sent letters. Our neighbor, the Pachanga Tribe, they met with the U.S. Department of Transportation. Thank you. Our Senator Feinstein Harris. Our neighboring Pachanga Tribal Government, again, thank you. Neighboring cities, our Temecula Valley Chamber, VTV, Caltrans. The city is grateful and we are very excited to get this project done. So again, it didn't happen in a vacuum. It wasn't just one person. It was a multitude of efforts, and I couldn't be more proud of the Pat, his team, Betsy Lowry, Greg Butler, the City Council for supporting this. It really was an amazing victory yesterday, so thank you for letting us take the time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. So my concluding comments are this. Once again, approximately 71% of the traffic on that freeway is other than Temecula traffic. So on behalf of the City Council, on behalf of our staff, and by extension, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Temecula, we're able to do this regional project that's going to benefit all of Southwest Riverside County, their residents, and their economic development.
Good job.
Well done, everybody. And with that, that covers presentations. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. I think there'll probably be more ceremony as time goes on. Once again, I cannot emphasize enough the heavy lifting by Congressman Ken Calvert. It's simply remarkable. Moving on to the public comment portion of our meeting, Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have two public comments.
So can you play my video?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
I'm Skyler Temple, Temecula resident. A total of 30 minutes is provided for the members of the public to address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once a speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, the request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Thank you. What you don't see is we had a fan off camera, and we were actually going to go with rain, but we just decided to tone it down. Madam City Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by our final speaker, Ira Robinson.
Mr. Cowell, thank you for your patience tonight.
Actually, it was a good night to be here for, see what, see that to happen. I've been here since 1987 in this area. I've probably known you for 20-something years.
Exactly.
So it's great. Congratulations for all of us.
Thank you.
But that's not my speech. Okay, I, going back to the, you know, socialism versus constitution, I know this is going to get maybe tiring, but it won't actually. You know, a lot of the socialist Democrats running for president or other offices have stated that we need national healthcare. And they cite most of the world having a universal healthcare system. And there is a universal healthcare system in many countries around the world. In fact, most of the, many, yeah, 43 countries. So, you know, one of the countries that is not on that list happens to be China, of all places. Communist China does not have a universal healthcare system. I didn't know that till, just looking at the map tonight. However, there's very few countries that actually have a national universal healthcare system that's done by the federal government. And so one of those is Britain. And Britain, as you know, Great Britain is not, is not doing very well in that, in the national healthcare system. Canada's another one, and people are coming down south to get their healthcare done. So those two are examples. If you look at the Nordic countries that a lot of people have talked about, they are proudly, and they'll say that they are a very capitalist system. They're not socialist systems at all. And say that we were at one time, of course, Sweden was very socialist at one time. They had over 100% income tax. But as of late, they're getting the idea that, yeah, some of this stuff doesn't work very well. And actually, they're bifurcated. They're actually, well, what they've done in the Nordic countries is actually take their healthcare and move it to the community. So they actually pay, like in Denmark or Finland is where this guy right here that I'm reading from, in 2017, Tim Warstall. He is mentioning somebody from Finland, and their healthcare system is in the community. It's not a national system. And it works pretty good. But the United States is still number three in the world as far as getting patients to specialists. And that's pretty fantastic considering our system is just totally capitalist in a sense, but not really, because if somebody's really sick, they can go to the hospital and get well, care. But having said all that, you know, Denmark, the, or Danes, they just pay 3.76% in their national income tax. The rest of it is done at the local level. 3.76% on their national income tax. Anyway, that's my three minutes, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Next speaker, please.
Our final speaker is Ira Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ira Robinson. I didn't hear anything I really needed to refute. What I would like to say about national healthcare is they've got a huge legislature in Washington, 100 senators, 435 members of the House of Representatives and a president who will probably work that out. I expect we'll end up with the kind of healthcare that we need. I would like to make one comment, though, and that is to just note that since the beginning of this discussion, everyone has dropped the idea that the Constitution has anything to do with whether we do capitalism or socialism or communism. I'm happy to see that. Thank goodness for reading the Constitution. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. And there's no more speakers, correct? Okay, sounds good. We'll go to City Council reports. Any of my colleagues need to get in the queue? Councilmember Schwank?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick slide if we could put that up really quick. All right. Did you know that we have an RTA Route 55, as otherwise known as the Trolley? This is a fun and safe way for, mostly for our kids to get around town. But what we wanted to do is we wanted to create a training day. A lot of parents will say, oh, we didn't know about it, or how does it work or whatnot. So we did just that. So Wednesday, August 7th, from 10:00 to noon at Harveston Community Park, you can come and learn about it. Again, it's a totally free service that RTA and the city partners. It stops in Harveston, Chaparral, and the Promenade Mall. So come on out on August 7th and learn about RTA, Route 55.
So elaborate a little bit. What's going to happen on the training day?
Well, you'll get to learn the route, first of all. A lot of apprehension from parents mostly is, well, where does my child get off? And how do they get to James L. Day? Or how do they get to school? So they'll learn the route. They'll actually be able to ride it without that stressor of actually having to get off and get to school. They'll be, it'll be a very stress-free environment. There'll be games as well. There'll be some other fun things to draw the people out. But really just lower that barrier for folks to, rather than the first day of school, hopping on the bus, you get a little jumpstart. You get a little training day to learn about it in a stress-free environment.
Fun.
Little bit of history. That line and the revenue, or rather, the financing for it came from the approval of the Harveston Development circa 2003 as a sustainable development. Who's still paying for that? Is that coming from an endowment from Harveston or is that just simply RTA?
Yeah, after the development agreement ran its course, we began funding it through subvention funds, which are AB2766, and those was clean fuel. And so we did that for many, many years. And then only of recently have we elected to continue doing that with the city's general fund. So we are subsidizing this. We are partnering with RTA, and it does have one of the highest riderships, I believe, as it should in the city limits.
Pretty cool. And thank you for your work on RTA. This is pretty good. Last comment is that issue was brought forward by the council member whose name is going to be on these chambers here pretty soon. That was Jeff Comicero, and that's just part of his legacy and just one of the things that he was able to accomplish.
That's great.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Stewart?
Okay, I got to experience the Youth Emergency Preparedness Program, and it's a very, very cool thing that the city puts on by bringing in high school students from age 14 to 18 and teaching them how to deal with emergency situations such as CPR, if someone's choking. If someone cuts himself, how do you, how do you stop that blood from flowing? If there's an earthquake, what are you supposed to do? If there's an active shooter, what should you do? How should you approach that? So 25 kids actually participated with 10 kids on the waiting list. So it's a very popular program. It's something that's very needed, and it does provide another level. And I found, I found it kind of striking that the first responders, the fire department that was there, was actually saying, you are going to be the first responder on a situation. You're going to be the first one that's going to administer CPR or to help this person. So they really, they really attached value to what they were learning. So I thought that was very cool.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Anything, Ms. Edwards?
I do, actually, as long as we're talking about RTA, which is a wonderfully run and well-managed transit authority. You may not know, but kids can get on the bus at the Promenade Mall and pay 25 cents and get a ride all the way to Oceanside, spend the day at the beach, get back on the bus, and come back to the Promenade Mall. And it's been so popular over the last four or five years that they've had to add several buses to that line. It's great for parents who can put your kids on the bus. Now, you have to be the determiner of how old they need to be to go to the beach by themselves or as a group, but it's wonderful. You don't have to drive them, and you can go with them, but it's not going to cost you a quarter. It's going to cost you regular bus fare, which is still very reasonable. So if you check RTA schedules, you can get on at the Promenade Mall with your kids, go to Oceanside, spend the day, and then come back right to the Promenade Mall.
Thank you, colleagues. Now's the time for the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. One, waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of July 9th, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of May 31st, 2019. Five, approve meeting schedule for City Council meetings for the months of November and December 2019. Six, adopt a resolution to establish the amount of the voter-approved Measure C annual special tax levy for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. Seven, approve an agreement for consultant services with MDG Associates, Inc., to provide community development block grant administration services for fiscal years 2019 through 2022. Eight, adopt a resolution to designate the Director of Public Works, City Engineer, as the authorized representative to execute for disaster relief and emergency financial assistance. Nine, approve the professional services agreement for various annual services for the Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Division for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. And 10, approve the amendments to the annual agreements for construction management services for the Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Program Division for fiscal year 2019 through 2020. I will take a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
That was Councilmember Schwank, Mayor Protem Stewart. Let's cast votes. And that gets approved 4-0 with Councilmember Ron absent. Let's see. Let's see, we'll go next. Okay, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting and turn the meeting over to Temecula Community Service District President, President Stewart.
And I will reconvene the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Please note, we're all still here. Do we have any public comments? All right, so we'll go straight to the consent calendar. Item number 11, approve the action minutes of July 9th, 2019.
Move consent.
Second. It's been moved and seconded by Mayor, well, are you considered a mayor in this?
No, I'm a director on this one, yeah.
Director Nigar and Director Schwank. Please vote. All right. And that's 4-0 because Mr. Ron is not here. Community Directors Report.
Yes, Mr. President. Just a couple of items tonight. This Thursday, join us for our last concert of the summer at the Temecula Amphitheater. This week's feature band is 80's All Stars. Gates open at 5:00 p.m. and the concert begins at 7:00 p.m. We'll see you there. Also, Lynn, come on out and celebrate the final weeks of summer with our last two movie nights. This Friday features Ralph Breaks the Internet at Harveston Park and a celebration of Smokey Bear's 75th birthday on August 9th. And honestly, I'm not sure how or when it happened, but all of us in TCSD just love Smokey the Bear. Not sure, but we do. We asked around. I love Smokey. Don loves Smokey. So as a result, there will be cupcakes, birthday activities in the feature movie, planes, fire and rescue, all at Temecula Hills Parks. And activities always begin at 6:00 p.m. and the movie starts at dusk. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. General Manager's report.
Mr. President, just one item. Wanted to acknowledge that we cut the ribbon yesterday on a major capital improvement project, which was the renovation of the swimming pool at the CRC, the expansion of the pool deck, the addition of shade. I think all of the improvements are welcomed, and it was, it was great to have everybody out there yesterday. And the coordination between Pat, your team, Community Services, and everybody that was involved was, was amazing, and it was just awesome to check another box on a CAP project and deliver it to the community yesterday. So thank you for that.
Awesome. All right, any Directors' reports?
Nope.
All right. And I will recess to the end of the meeting for item number 12. I'll recess to the City Council meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City, actually, no, I'm going to convene the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Madam City Clerk, let the record show that all Directors are here with the exception of Director Ron. Do we have any public comment? We have one item on the consent calendar, authorized fiscal year 2019-2020, special tax levies for the community facilities districts. I will take a, and it looks like there's, yeah, several resolutions. I think we can take them all at one time.
So moved?
Second.
All right. That was moved by Mayor Protem Stewart or Director Stewart, seconded by Director Schwank. Who needs to press his button? There you go. Please cast your vote. And that's, I'm sure it's going to pass 4-0 with Director Ron absent. Executive Director, you don't have a report tonight, do you?
No, sir.
Okay. Any Directors? Okay, we're going to adjourn to the next regular scheduled, the public financing meeting, August 13th, 2019. At this time, I'm going to reconvene the At this time, I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Let's see. We're going to go to Commission Reports. How about you, Mr. Sullivan? Nice haircut.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Just to announce that our Commission Traffic and Safety will meet in these chambers, 6:00 p.m. Thursday, to look at traffic coming in the Red Hawk and Crown Hill areas. So those interested parties, feel free to attend.
Thank you. Pleasure to see Ms. Turley Trejo tonight.
Hello.
Hi there.
So fun to be here. I don't really have a planning commission report, but I do have a thank you from the pickleball community. We have real pickleball courts in Temecula. That, I know that's a little bit less than the $50 million, but I have to say, our, hopefully, our annual pickleball city tournament that we had last week was so fun. And it was great to have city out there, to city staff, city council, city commissioners, see what it is to play pickleball. And there's a lot of people that already were using the courts without them being real. And now they're real. And so want to give a special thank you to our director over here of Community Services for listening to this community that was very excited about it. And also Pat and everything that you did to help with this. And we actually invited Pat to Castle Creek in Valley Center to give him a taste of what it could be like. And so I think it was a great vision, right, to see that. And so anyway, excited about Temecula having that. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Out of curiosity, who was in the finals for the pickleball tournament?
Well, if you must ask.
I must.
Planning Commission was in the finals. Our planning director, our community development director, Luke, and myself. But we stunk it up in the finals. We did really bad.
And you lost to who?
We lost to our IT, right there. Yep.
Jonathan and who else?
Jonathan and Hunter.
And Hunter. Jonathan, good job there, buddy. All right, good job, you guys.
And I have to say that second place is like kissing your sister. Not very fun.
Thank you for that, to conclude on that note. I hope my sister's not watching. Mr. Willis?
I had the opportunity to watch Top Gun with my son for the first, for his first time. And so I think this is appropriate. Gentlemen, this school is about combat. There are combat, there are no points for second place. Because I believe what was said in the movie. Appropriate, given that Top Gun 2 is coming out soon. So it should be interesting. Only 30 years late, but hey, I've been waiting for a long time for that. So I'll be there. You know, I was mentioning prior to the meeting, I think it is appropriate just to talk about this for just a minute, because I don't have anything truly relevant to talk about Community Services at the moment. But over the last couple of weeks, I've been approached a couple of times within the community about questions. And so just want to thank the council for having us in our roles. And just to tell you, it really does make a difference. Because we were talking about last meeting and some articles that were written in the newspaper that were brought to our attention, brought to my attention. And through regular communication, got to give feedback to the community without them having to come here and get the feedback. So that line of defense, that front line of communication that we can offer to you guys, I think, is very valuable, I hope. But thank you for having us in that role, because I think it really helps.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Let's move over to Public Safety Report. Brad, what do you have?
For the month of June, we had 760 incidents. We also want to say that with the heat index and everything else, that the Mary Phillips Senior Center here, Office 6th Street, will be the cooling center that we have for the city. And also the, what Kevin was talking about for the planes and rescue on the 9th. That whole movie was actually dictated off of our Him at Ryan Air Attack Base. So we will definitely have a representative there and a fire engine there for that night. So, in a report.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have anything for us?
Nothing more tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
We had a close session tonight, but we have no actions to report under the Brown Act.
Sounds good. So before I take a motion to adjourn the Temecula City Council meeting, I'm going to recess it first.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can tell you guys are itching. I got it, I got it. I'm going to recess the council meeting first and turn it back over to Temecula Community Service District President, Mr. Stewart.
All right. So I'll reconvene yet again. Will the District Secretary please announce the results of the ballot tabulation and identify whether a majority protest does or does not exist for service Level C by zone, for Zone 1, 4, 7, 10, 11, 14, 15, 17, 22, and 27?
Yes, Mr. President. There was a majority protest filed for all zones. And Section 9 of the resolution is modified to reflect the existence of a majority protest for all zones and that the rates and charges for these zones are levied in accordance with the report, with no increase for any zone. Copies of the approved resolution and official results will be available through the city clerk's office upon request.
All right. Do any of my colleagues have any questions?
A couple.
Okay.
Just the first one is, since there won't be any increase, that means we can only pay for what our levy requires. So there's probably going to be a reduction in service. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. We, we're struggling to balance the budgets for these zones and will most likely be reducing the amount of service that we're able to provide based on the revenue that we're receiving.
What happens if you simply can't, if you can't get an affordable bid or price to maintain? Do we just not do it? Do we dissolve the district? What's the alternative?
Well, we just continue to reduce the services within what the amount of revenue that's available. If there was an interest in dissolving the district, there is a process for that. So that is something that could be done. Would take an action of the city council to do that. But we hope to continue to work with the residents to be able to fund appropriately what the cost of this maintenance will be going forward.
Sounds good. My comment is, I don't know if the residents, I'd like to assume that they were fully aware.
That's what I was going to ask.
That, it's not up to me. It's up to the, Mr. Pres. I think the city manager wants to ask something. But my comment, I have this comment and another one. But I wonder if the residents knew that they literally voted themselves lesser service and perhaps no service. That's really concerning. That's my first comment. And I think the city manager wanted to say something.
Yes.
Yes. Just two things. I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to address the residents' question that was posed to the board. But secondarily, to answer your question, I do believe they knew what they were voting for. There was an extensive outreach. I think we knew, based on the reaction that we had when we had these public workshops, this was not going to be a slam dunk or an easy sell. And maybe, folks, what they don't recognize is the seriousness of having to scale further back based on our cost and that we can't use the general fund to sort of supplement this. There's legalities around the financing of this slope maintenance. I think, and we've talked about this, this is going to become an annual thing. The beauty and the aesthetics of our slopes are important to Temecula. At least, they're important to us. But ultimately, the residents are going to choose what they want those to look like. So I think next year, we'll be here in front of you. We'll start early or earlier with the outreach. We'll pick 10 zones or more. And we'll attempt to continue to give residents another opportunity to revisit this thing. And it's unfortunate, at least in my opinion, that none passed this evening. But the voters spoke.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
So do we follow up with a notice to the residents within these zones that it did not pass and what the implications will be?
Mr. Thorson, do we have a legal obligation to notify?
No, no, we don't. They will see that the rate is the same as it was in previous years. But there's no obligation to advise them of the vote that was taken.
That kind of concerns me because, first of all, I'm sure a lot of people think that it's the city imposing the fees and that they're, you know, it's a tax or something, when we know that's not the case. But what they're going to see is they weren't aware of the vote or the implications of the vote, and all of a sudden, their slopes are looking bad. And it's the city's fault. And that does concern me.
Well, it may be actually the very action that motivates folks to reconsider this 12 months from now.
As long as they understand the reason behind it, I would hope that would be the case. I mean, there are consequences. So, you know, they have, this is the action that they've chosen, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, and I guess along the lines of that comment, let's take, for instance, Ms. Whittington, which, I'm going to ask a question regarding what you brought up. But now, now she's going to be responsible to maintain the flood control channel behind her home, as will her neighbor, and the neighbor's neighbor, and the neighbor's neighbor, and any of the damage that comes from that. Is that a fair statement?
I'd like to let Pat weigh in on the specific situation and circumstances surrounding the property.
Sounds good. Let me rephrase the question and not use her as an example, then.
Yes.
Let's say, let's say we have a profusion of weeds that grow to be three, four feet tall, and the Community Service District or the CSA can't afford to trim the weeds. What's the alternative? Who's got the responsibility?
Well, ultimately, as you mentioned, that land is owned by the individual property owners. So that would potentially be their responsibility. We did meet with Ms. Whittington multiple times as we were going through this process. And her zone and property is somewhat unusual because of the fact that there is that drainage channel that really is, it's part of the zone maintenance. But the zone is really only set up for doing landscape maintenance and not maintenance of a flood control facility. So that's why, you know, we really are only able to provide kind of the weed abatement and, you know, trying to keep the vegetation growth down in that channel and not actually, like, cleaning that channel out, which would be, you know, at a higher cost, which was something that, you know, would be needed, you know, for a flood control facility. So that's what we've tried to explain, is that, you know, with the funding that is received for that, it's really only intended for that landscape maintenance purpose. You know, I don't really have an explanation for why that drainage channel was included in this zone. It was something that was set up, you know, many, many years ago. Maybe it wasn't the most appropriate thing to do at the time, but that's the way it is, and that's what we have to deal with now.
If I may. I was just, I'm curious. Who is responsible, then, for that flood control channel?
Well, it's on private property. There are easements overlaying that. So we have an easement for the landscape maintenance purpose. So that is what we use our easement for. You know, I believe there may be a drainage easement that is in the favor of the flood control district. I'm not.
.................................................................................
Right. But we have not treated that as a city drainage facility. We've treated it as a area that we maintain under this service Level C, which is for landscape maintenance purposes.
Maybe that's something we should look into to see. I mean, because I would think we have some sort of obligation, don't we, towards flood control?
If I can?
Yeah.
And this is my suspicion, is most likely, when your subdivision was put together, its obligation to take upstream flow and return it to an existing condition downstream was a condition of approval. This is my suspicion, because I deal with it all the time. And of course, everything downstream needs to do the same thing. Most likely, this was revealed in your title report that you had this obligation and that this portion of your, I'm sure it's got to be on your title report. Maybe it's not. So maybe you talked to your title insurance regarding it. And you comment from the point of order, she needs to be on the record if you're going to approve. She can't talk from the audience. Anyway, I'm just mentioning that. But that's my suspicion. Probably, I deal with it all the time. You got to take upstream flow and disposition it downstream. And the guy downstream needs to do the same thing, all the way till it gets down to the creek and out to the ocean. So that's probably what occurred. My suspicion.
And I just, more comment is, you know, we do have other situations, such as that, where there is a drainage channel running through private property. And as the mayor mentioned, it's the property owner's responsibility to protect their property and allow that water to pass through their property. And that's.
And I don't want to belabor this, but I'll give you an example. Where I live, I have two major metropolitan water district lines that run through my property that, it's my property. The lines are about, I mean, they're huge. They supply all of San Diego. I mean, I'm really fearful one day somebody will break them and I'll make the news of all the water being shut off in San Diego. But I can't build on that. I can't use it. They let me landscape over it. But it's useless to me, yet I pay tax on it. They have an easement on it. It just is what it is. And I knew it when I bought the land. That may not be your situation, but it's an example of where that exists. And of course, those lines run all the way, along with gas lines, all the way through Temecula.
All right. That being said, we don't have any further action, do we?
Actually, you do.
Okay.
If you could go, refer to Section 7.
Okay. Can I please get a motion to adopt a resolution of the Board of Directors of Temecula Community Service District adopting the rates and charges assessments for service Level B,